It is 11:00 a.m., so we're gonna go ahead and start. Road call, Commissioner Ringer.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
Judge Shaw here. Commissioner Schindler is not here. Commissioner Hummel.
Here.
You're also pleased with the county police office.
Here.
Please stand and join us in opening prayer. Please stand to the podium to lead. Family Father, we ask that you be with us today. We ask that you be with our county. We ask that you be with everybody that's on the road and all the traffic and the evil for and wherever you are, please support our troops. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
A pledge to lead is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number five on the agenda is a public hearing to discuss the current conditions of the Carls County Jail. And Brandon Woods with the Texas Commission of Jail Standards is here, and he's gonna be able to kinda talk to us about what's going on with our jail and the condition it's in and situations that it's in. This is not a decision-making meeting, it's just an informational meeting. However, I did post it as an agenda because there would be three of us here and we'd be talking about county business. And just to save face, it's easier to post than pay. So go ahead. Anybody that has any questions, Brandon, we'd like you to come up and please feel free to come up and if you want to, you can grab that chair and sit here and talk to us about what's going on.
First off, thank you for having me here. I think it's been approximately a year and a half since I was in Carls County the last time and had an opportunity to look at the condition of your facility. And since that time, quite a few things have changed for the better. And I know that that took quite a bit of work on your part and Sheriff's Office part to make sure that that happened. And some of the conditions that we were concerned about last time have been addressed for the time being. Hopefully those will remain in place and you'll continue to operate that facility as a compliant facility with minimum jail standards. Now, one of the things that we're always conscientious about on these older facilities because you do operate a facility that is considered grandfather and that it was an operation prior to the creation of our agency. But for the facility to even meet the grandfathered standards, they had to have five variances issued. And without those variances, your county jail will not be able to operate. So it is imperative that the county jail remain in compliance because if not, those variances will be brought up for review and possibly be canceled. So I would again caution you, please ensure that the county jail is being maintained in a proper manner and that all minimum jail standards are being met because if the variances are canceled, then you're kinda placed in a very difficult position in a very short period of time. Now, as far as any of the other issues that may come up in the future, I can't speak to the future. I'm not sure what your inmate population will do. It appears after discussing population with the jail staff that weekends seem to be your biggest challenge at the moment. One of the other concerns that I had with your facility is that you have one holding cell and you do not actually have a detoxification cell, which would allow you to house inmates that are intoxicated. And I'm not sure how many of those that you experience. The jail staff said that when they have to, they place those individuals in the holding cell as well. So I would caution you, watch that practice because that can come back. And technically, that is a violation of minimum jail standards, but we understand the situation that you're placed in. And as long as that individual can care for themselves, they can be placed in a holding cell. But again, that's something that you need to be very cognizant of. And if at all possible, stop that practice. But without a detox cell in your facility, you're left with very few options. The facility itself, the housing has been renovated, cleaned up, and both sides are now being utilized whenever it's necessary. As far as inmate populations that are housing out, it sounds like 20 is what you have out almost on a daily basis. And sometimes that has reached up to 30 in the past. So I understand that you have a contract to house out, and if that is what it takes in order for you to maintain compliance with minimum jail standards, we have no problems with that. It's a county decision how you maintain compliance, whether that's close your facility, maintain it, or house your inmates out. Our primary concern is ensuring that if you do operate a county jail, that you do maintain compliance with those minimum jail standards. If you have any questions, I'm here as a resource witness and will be more willing to answer anything that you have.
Just for clarification, y'all know that Brandon is the Executive Director of the Commission of Jail Standards, right? Because everybody knows that that's his new title and that's what he does. And so he's the guy at the end that tells us what's going on with the jail. He does the regulation.
Okay, I got a couple of questions. Okay, how many variances are we operating under? Twenty-something?
Uh, no, thankfully not twenty-something. We don't have any that have that many variances on the books. Right now, we have five variances in place for the Carls County Jail.
Five. Okay, you did say if these variances are canceled, what causes them to be canceled?
If you do not maintain compliance with all minimum jail standards, for example, if you allow your fire alarm control panel to become inoperable, or if it's not inspected on an annual basis, if your remote controls for the doors are no longer operable, if your health inspection fails. It's a myriad of things that can cause these variances to be brought up for review. If you don't have proper amount of staff, if you misclassify an inmate. So it is as much operations as it is facility management and maintenance. And if at any point in time you are in noncompliance, those variances can be brought up before our board, reviewed and canceled.
What are the five variables?
The five variances that we currently have for the facility go back to the rules that were in place in 1976 when the commission was created. The first one deals with the number of single cells that the facility has. Whenever the original rules were put into place, you're required to have 30 percent of your capacity available for single cell occupancy. You also do not have a day room provided for one of the cells. The statutes require that cells also be provided dayroom space, which traditionally contain the shower, table, seating for feeding areas. Safe vest bill is not provided for one of the cells as well. Safe vest bills are two doors in series. It allows for greater security to be provided within the facility in the inmate housing areas. Emergency of operation of doors. Right now, and I'm sure that all of y'all have heard the facility and seen it in operation, the way that it is operated is primarily through the use of keys throughout the facility. There are some remote operable doors, but without all of them being electrical, then it does require the use of keys and those keys have to be available 24 hours per day. And the last one deals with the kitchen in your facility and the fact that the floor is not pitched and does not have a floor drain. And the way the facility looks is that possibly you've had a live-in jail or sheriff at one point in time that may have been in an apartment or possibly a matron cooked and lived in back there. And whenever they renovated the facility in 1980, it looks like they just turned that area into the kitchen and worked with what they have. And of course going in and placing floor drains and sloping the floors is a pretty costly endeavor. So instead of going down that path, they granted a variance for the facility at that point in time. So those are the five variances that we have currently in place in the Carls County Jail.
Can I ask you a question? Has the Senator of the Legislature ever talked about removing variances or, I mean, I remember something came up with the Don about this and I don't remember the conversation and that's why I'm asking you.
The past two sessions, there has been a representative that has introduced a bill to eliminate the possibility of granting of any future variances and canceling all existing variances. The agency has provided the Representatives Committee with information regarding the fact that if they were to pass a law that removed variances, then grandfathered facilities would no longer be allowed to operate within the state because they would be in violation of state law at that point in time. And we don't know if that individual will introduce the bill again. It has not made it out of committee both times it has been introduced, but it is a possibility.
Do any of y'all have any questions for Brandon?
Nope, we live and breathe each other.
I mean, anybody have a concern or anything with the jail that they wanna address, say, do?
I mean, the jail, the jail's good as long as we keep up those five variances, right?
Those five variances won't be allowed to remain in place as long as all minimum jail standards are met.
As long as everything else is good, there, those will remain.
Those will remain as long as, for example, if the judge brought up, as long as we don't have the Representative or Senator introduce bills that would eliminate variances.
Yeah, I understand.
So if everything were to remain status quo, then the variances, as long as no life safety issues were to be brought up or anything along those lines, you would be able to retain those variances. One of the issues that we had last time we were here is there were life safety issues and that will cause the facility to be closed. Last time we had that occur was in Howard County and they were unable to maintain their life safety equipment and they were forced to close their facility and like a lot of counties ship their inmates out until they were able to get that fixed because once it's a life safety issue, there's no wiggle room for lack of the back term at that point in time. And everybody understands the seriousness of the life safety issues.
Yes, sir.
That's why we reconfigured all the smoke exhaust fans and stuff in it for the same running as bare metal. That's why we all spent all this money. Y'all graciously gave us money to keep this jail open, keep it, get a new jail. And like I said before, this is just a band-aid on a big old gushing wound. We really need to go forward with the new facility, just in cases of these variances and this stuff like this is talking about. This building can't last forever. There's all the important, all the side where the deputies are and everything else. We need a facility that is not hatched to the inmates or the personnel. So we need to go forward. Y'all really need to go forward with this new jail bill.
As far as the minimum jail standards are concerned, is there anything that says, once an inmate or inmates is removed from a cell, is there a cleaning crew that goes in there and disinfects and picks up and, you know, cleans up, tidies up before another inmate is brought in?
We have requirements that are standard and the jail is required to have a sanitation plan and they are required to follow it. How they carry that out, ensure the sanitation of the facility is going to be a little professional. So we would not micromanage the Sheriff's Office and state that upon release of an inmate, that facility, that cell will be cleaned by a trustee within four hours and the inmate will be placed in there until it is cleaned at that point in time. So we do require sanitation to be performed and as far as the details of that, that's left up to the county.
So a lot of times in these jails such as ours, inmates are taken out and other inmates put in right behind them without any kind of...
That's a possibility due to the fact that you have a small facility and on a weekend, I would imagine that it becomes somewhat chaotic over there. That staff said that they had 16 come in over the weekend and that, I'm not sure if you were the judge that comes in and magistrates on Monday mornings or Sunday evenings in order to try to reduce the population, but whenever you're running 16 inmates or possibly 20 over the weekend until you can get them shipped out, you're probably trying to utilize every inch of space over there that you possibly can. And with quite a few of those cells being multiple occupancy cells, that may not ever be completely vacant. There may be one inmate in there and two beds and another one's put in there before the other one's even removed. So as far as you going in there cleaning up afterwards before each inmate is placed in there, you'd be hard pressed to do that at times, I would imagine.
For these, under minimum jail standards, are they required to do any testings for TB or...
There are requirements for the testing of all inmates for tuberculosis to ensure that you're not, you know, creating an environment to spread infectious disease such as that. If you were to have an inmate with TB, your facility's not equipped to handle them. You don't have a negative pressure cell and I'm sure the Department of State Health Services wouldn't certify the facility to hold an individual even if you did at this point in time. So there are all requirements that you test those inmates and that's one of the standards that we do look at. It has to be done within a certain amount of time after arrival. And the test, traditionally a skin test, will be read before the death of the day.
Have you done any tactical... Is that the only other disease that, that under minimum jail standard you're required to check for?
That's the only communicable disease. There is a health screening form and the inmate can inform jail staff of any disease or any medications that they are on, which will in turn oftentimes trigger a full evaluation by medical. I'm not sure how you contract for medical services at this point in time, but that's the only one that's specifically called out.
So, well, you check in an inmate, are you required to do every inmate or is there some discretion there? I mean, in other words, if I were to get checked in right now, would they ask me all these questions? Do I have any diseases that I know about?
The intake screening form is to be completed immediately upon intake for all inmates.
Is that a requirement of the minimum jail standard?
It is.
That's under the assumption that's the answer, honestly.
I'm sorry.
Every inmate is to fill out every time without exception? Anybody that's put into a cell is to be...
When they're brought into the facility?
Yes, sir.
That is when staff enters the intake screening form on every inmate. That's one of the things that we, that we check on during annual inspections, screens for not only physical deformities and physical ailments, but also mental health issues as well.
Now, the data that I have, yeah.
Yeah, inmates and art does visits to the jail directly. They can do the jail and the hospital. I think that's what we usually do. Can I ask you a question? You said you had 16 in there this week? What, what do we do, I mean, with the intoxicated ones, when they come in like that, you only have the one holding cell, what are we doing with those? How are we...
Just housing.
Are we supposed to do that?
You gotta live with it for four hours.
I'm asking, are we supposed to do, does that meet minimum jail standard, I mean, standards?
You gotta be there four hours, you gotta get them back, get them out. So what do you do? I mean...
If the individual's intoxicated and unable to care for themselves, they're replaced in a detox cell, which has the low bench.
So it's for safety? It's for safety of the person, I mean inmate in the...
Of the inmate.
And like I said, if these people are too intoxicated, that's what we've got, the holding cell. You know, we're kinda keeping there, keeping an eye on them. So we can put the rest of them in there. It used to be the detox cell, but we changed that.
Now, when it's a holding cell, Sheriff, how many of them can you put in there though?
I mean, you kinda pick and choose, poop the rumpus. I mean, that's basically what you gotta do. If you can't take care of yourself, you fall down, they drop them off onto the highway patrol, Kennedy Police Department, whoever dropped these people, we have to take them. So we gotta do the best of what we got and that's an everyday deal. That's something we live with every day. It's something just gone, like I said, we moved 16 people through that 12-bed jail this weekend. And that's why we're working with the JPs and trying to get everybody in there, get them back, you gotta keep them for four hours.
Judge, because as I said, she logged over 100 miles to and from the jail this weekend.
So that's why I'm saying, working with the JPs, get them there, get them out, get them out on bond so we make room for other people. 12-bed jail, ain't cut it no more.
Have you ever seen anybody so intoxicated they fall down?
Yes.
Now, I hope that was a PI, not a DWI.
Oh, come on, Al.
Come on.
I haven't seen anybody's pictures in the paper for being convicted or charged with a DWI, so I was just wondering. I was thinking maybe this was Dry County and we just don't have any people driving under the influence and driving out intoxicated. Bob, do we have a lot of DWIs in the county?
I would, no.
You're the county attorney, aren't you?
I don't do the wrestling.
Yeah, but I mean, how many cases do you have right now, DWI cases pending in your office?
I don't know, Carl, around 50.
About 50? That's within the last six months or since the first of the year?
Remember what, how far they go back. Probably back to the place we were. Probably back to the time we moved here.
What's a conviction rate, say on 50, something DWIs, what's the conviction rate? Are they found guilty or...
They're found guilty if they are guilty. Takes about three days to try DWIs, so 50 over the, what, 15 a day, 1500 days?
How many, how many DWI trial cases have we had, say, in the last year?
I don't remember. It wasn't a whole lot.
One or two?
I don't think so.
Not even that many? One? One in the last year?
That was, that was a not guilty. I don't remember any others. Have you been back in jail since that time?
Sir?
Have you been back in jail since the last time you...
No, not since that one...
That's enough, that's enough. We're not doing that. It's very inappropriate.
Started it.
Not doing that. Business questions is one thing.
By the way, thank you for visiting me, Bob, bringing me those cookies. All right.
That is enough, Carl. There's, there's no reason for that. I mean, let him attack you all he wants personally, it's not gonna hurt you. Don't go there. Anybody got anything else for Brandon?
How you like our court?
Is there anything else we need to know? Because, you know, you're a lot softer spoken than the Don. You're a lot, uh...
I am. I do take a different approach than you, on quite a few issues. You're faced with an issue of trying to maintain a facility that was built in the 50s, renovated during the 80s, just to be able to maintain compliance at that point in time. You've been able to operate the facility with the variances in place and serve the county for all these years. One detox cell that you did have was converted to a holding cell. It was not uncommon for these facilities built in the 50s to have just one detox cell and no holding. That would face upon the fact that they had so few inmates going through the facility that they could immediately place those individuals that they brought in into housing by themselves because they had have a cell by themselves and it would not be an issue. That's not the case of Carls County it's facing these days. You have multiple inmates in your facility, sometimes possibly one or two going through the booking process. That is why the detox cell was converted to a holding cell. The county looked and tried to determine what their needs were at that time and they decided to convert that cell. Now, that does not mean that you will not have intoxicated individuals brought to the facility. And how the sheriff is able to handle that and make it work, that is how he's making it work. If he has an individual that is so intoxicated that he is unable to take care of himself and they're placed into any of those cells, they're, you're technically in a status of noncompliance because you are violating minimum jail standards. I'm not going to put the sheriff on the spot and ask him if that has occurred. He knows what the rules are and he's trying to make it work as much as he possibly can. As far as safety systems, the county did expend quite a few dollars trying to get the smoke fan in place and working because the last time I was here and we tried to make it alarm, we did not have anything occur at that point in time. The county put forward a plan immediately to try to keep the jail open and it's working at this point in time. How far in the future that works, I can't say. That's going to be up to the county, maintaining that facility and ensuring that you're operating it properly. Because like I said earlier, it is physical plant maintenance, but it's also the operational aspect of it. You were talking about the intake screening form earlier. That has to be performed on every inmate. If it's not filled out properly, that's cause for a notice of noncompliance to be issued. And any of these notices of noncompliance that can be issued can all affect your variances. So please, you have a new sheriff coming in and you'll have some new staff, I imagine, and that's always a very difficult time, especially with these older facilities. So be mindful of all those issues because you're gonna have challenges come up before you. And it won't be because the sheriff and the sheriff elect do not know what they're doing, it's that they're dealing with a facility that they've had to operate based upon the age and the variances in place.
Well, I do, I wanna ask the sheriff something and I'm definitely not trying to put you on the spot. Brandon said he wouldn't, but has this occurred, we end up with more than one person in a condition where we do have concerns arise and stuff like this arise? And the reason that I'm asking are that I want all this out in the open is because when something's messed up from the Commission of Jail Standards, the letter goes to the sheriff and then to me. And so I finally asked Brandon, I said, "Now, Brandon, Mr. Woods here with the Jail Standards", I said, "What happens when we fall out of compliance, you know, and we can't fix it anymore?" So the sheriff and I still get those. And he gave me the answer I wanted to hear because it, it always looks like I'm the one that's trying to do this or fix this when it's not. He said, "No, you'll know when it actually, the plan no longer works because a letter will be addressed to the sheriff, then you, then the Commissioners' Court." I said, "Well, thank you." Because, I mean, it seems like a burden that you have to carry, you know, it's always the sheriff and I in this little pot by ourselves. And I want everybody else to know, so if, if something is not working, and that's why I keep harping on the issue of these intoxicated inmates, have you run across the point where you've had two so intoxicated that you've had to, I guess, manipulate your jail to make it work?
I mean, he's very fortunate. He usually had one at a time. I mean, so bad that he can't function on his own. So, I mean, we've had a lot of intoxicated people, but most of them blowing right over the eight or right up at 15 or something, you know, like I said, you're talking people at two and two and a half and three, so...
Can't you die by there?
Supposed to. People here just don't.
You know, I have a, I have a kind of silly question, but I've always wondered about this, that those wrong-way signs, are those for drunk drivers?
I mean, because we just, we're hearing more and more about fights. We're hearing more and more about the fights. I mean, we're hearing about alcohol-induced arguments.
But this is what, I went to the tasers less than lethal because we're getting to a situation now, we've got all these people coming in from everywhere else. Like I said, I knew my local drunks, I know my local people, you know, knew how to handle them. But like I said, all these people are coming in from all over the United States and foreign countries, coming in our, our county now to do this off-field stuff. That's why I went to tasers the other day and spent $14,000 and we're doing training as we speak to do the less than lethal. Because these people come in here, you know, small town, Carls County, USA, and you pull a gun on them, if you're not willing to use it, then they might take it away from you. Because these people are all off-field people. Now, I mean, they, they work for a living and they, they play hard and they live hard.
They're good people. They just make mistakes. Good people make bad decisions.
That's right. So this is why I said, this is why I spent a lot of time and a lot of effort selling illegal alien vehicles and stuff, which I didn't ever come to the Commissioners' Court and ask for any money for tasers or less than lethal. But that's what I've come to see, that we need this because we are going to more water fights. We had a killing just right here, one block away from the courthouse the other day. We arrested a pretty bad drunk right here, just right here at the Mercury Hills, 1:30 in the morning. So, I mean, you gotta do something other than less than lethal, you know? So that's kinda why I spent a lot of time, a lot of money and spent, sent people trained to do this because this jail here will not work anymore. I'm telling you right now, this is why I pushed for a new jail. I've been pushing for a new jail since 2005. We're here now. Because I knew I was gonna be dealing with Brandon Woods and the Domino's and all these people. When Terry Julian left, I knew it's gonna get tough. I knew it's gonna get tough. Because they, they're holding us accountable. You know, they're holding us, this is a liability waiting to happen, people. Back before, we was poor. We didn't have no money. Guess what? We're not poor no more. So do the right thing, let's get this jail built. We got the architect, this league on. But like I said, we don't be talking about this year or two down the road here when y'all paying out millions of dollars.
Getting back to these tasers, do they require a little medical attention after you've tased them or you just throw them in the cell?
No, you got a little alcohol swabs, put a little band-aid on them. No, we're the one through all that first aid stuff with this stuff.
Well, whatever you shoot them with, that's sterile?
Yeah.
And those wires with the little things...
Win one feet of, Carl.
Does that get replaced every time?
It gets Randy cartridge.
Would I put the wire and the little things that go in?
It gets Randy cartridge.
So that, that's all...
It's one time, it's one time shot, Carl. You get shot, you get shot one time. And that's it. Take it and you throw it away. Get another one.
When you go, when you go to try and ensure the person that that should have been doing the shooting has to take that shot right first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because they actually know what's happening.
Right.
And that's basically what you do, you know? You just don't do it.
What, what do you try to like shoot? Below the neck?
They normally shoot them in the head by hitting the eye.
I mean, you know what I mean, but...
Yeah, you shoot them, you shoot them in the fatty part of the body. Most time they try to hit them in here or in the back. So most time they're fighting. So that's why you shoot them in the back to get compliance.
Shoot them in the back?
Because if you see it coming, they move so slow, you can knock them away. Come on.
Jack, you don't wanna tap them on the shoulder and say, "Excuse me, can you turn around so I can hit you in your back while you're coming to tase you?" I don't think they're gonna agree.
But no, we're going through taser training right now.
Is there a limit on those tasers, Sheriff? Like, if there's a man seventy-something, eighty years old fighting, and they tase him, or there's a kid fighting?
Nope, it's all the same. We, we talked about this, we talked about people, pacemakers, we talked about people that had heart attacks.
Doesn't matter.
No big deal, it don't, that will not kill them.
If you're causing trouble, if you're causing trouble, you gotta get...
We gotta go back to jail. I mean, so we gotta go back to jail. Let's go back to the jail station.
Oh, that's all right.
Now, if y'all want taser one-on-one, I'll sign us up.
I've got two instructors right now.
Does anybody have any questions that they want to ask about the jail? Because once Brandon leaves, they'll come to me and say, "Now, I meant to ask Brandon, but I forgot, and this is what I wanted to know." You want to know, ask him, he's here. And that's, that's anybody. And I said, "So I guess our only concern is we have to worry about when Senate meets? And then we can, we can, I don't know, legislation meets, that's our only time of concern? If they, if they, if they never say no, then we're okay, but if they say yes for the variances to take them out, we're in trouble." So it's a hold-your-breath thing session by session sometimes. Mike, with anything else that goes before the legislature?
That is correct, but that is not your only concern, trying to maintain compliance in that facility.
Okay.
It is something that's gonna be challenging because of the age of the facility, and it's gonna require that everybody stay on top of it. So any of those can also cause your variances to go away. You deal with a lot of different issues that some of your facilities don't have to worry about. Your rent yard, your kitchen is technically outside your secure perimeter, but you have an inmate trustee that works in there. Those are issues that you are making work now, and it is working for you. Will that always be the case? There's quite a few challenges over there. So you say that the legislature is your only concern? It can require that your staff maintain diligence, keeping that facility up, commissioner's to fund the repairs, renovations, ongoing preventative maintenance. So you always have an concern, not just during the legislative session.
Just wanted to clarify that. Are you raising your hand? Are you telling?
Probably my thing.
Sheriff, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Sheriff, please, any questions?
Okay, is it liable to ask you anything about our jail plans?
No. Well, I mean, you're, you're talking about commission of jail standards, that's what we're talking about, is the condition that our current jail's in. That's the only thing that we're here for today. Let's not get off that, let's just stay where we're at.
Probably gonna have to approve the new facility as well, right?
Yes, we, we are required by statute to review it and...
It's one, it's one of the things, oh, we've been up there a few times. But it's one of the things, like, any facility where you're gonna house county inmates, or where we as a county are gonna house, just for clarification, commission of jail standards has to approve it. Like, when we were trying to get our county inmates out of GIO, and we kept having a hard time, and everybody kept saying, "Well, we have the beds, but we're not using them. We have the beds, and we're not using them, and we're wasting money." That was not the, that's not what's not the truth. But the truth was, is it was not meeting criteria according to the Texas Commission of Jail Standards because everybody has a different criteria, is that correct, Mr. Woods? And they were housing federal inmates or whatever they house out there. I don't want to misspeak.
There's federal inmates they're housing. But they got out, they got out under the jail, state jail commission and went to federal. Then they tried to come back in, and they had to re-damp a bunch, that took them about a year.
Right, because when we first opened that facility, it was commission of jail standards, and it went from not commission of jail standards. So then they had to reboot it, you know, kind of like starting over after they...
They had increased the capacity, once they left our purview, they installed additional beds at the facility. They took away quite a few of the multi-purpose rooms, they did quite a few things just to increase the capacity because those were for-profit inmates out there. In addition to that, some of the preventive maintenance had not been kept up with to include life safety systems, and they did wind up replacing quite a few of the smoke evacuation fans, and then going in there and ensuring that these smoke dampers and dampers for the rest of the HVAC systems were operational, they had not been maintained at all. So we had not been in there for several years, and then whenever Carls County put forward the option of housing county inmates at that facility, it was then required to go back out there. And I'm not sure, I haven't spoken to the operator of the facility since then, but I know that it was quite a deep national involvement all that.
They took all the state inmates out in two thousand and six. That's when they moved everybody to Pierceville. So I know exactly when that happened, February two thousand and six. And that's when they went federal to get extra hundred, hundred-and-fifty beds. So when they went back to state to house, to renegotiate this corn county contract with the beds, they had to go back under jail standards, and it took a while because they had been about, about five, six years, they had been operating under jail standards.
So any time, I guess to answer your question, when you were asking, any time we do something with county inmates, they have to approve it? They are a regulation agency, correct?
That's right.
Anybody else? I'm telling y'all, Drilling Wye is here. Nothing else? Nobody? The next item on the agenda is to adjourn.
I'll make it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mashing carries four zero. Brandon, would you like to go meet with Ford in the corner? Would you like to go meet Ford in the corner of the facility?
I'd go talk to him.
Okay. I was gonna give you a visual.
I am not.